Mr. Rogers, can you slide your camera over? Do we have everybody? Yes, we have everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday evening, January 24th, 2023 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners, also convening as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services, is now meeting this regular session, January 24th, 2023. Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Fai? I see you there. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you. And, Board members, if, just like with work session, if you can help me make sure that I notice Commissioner Fai's hand when she raises it, that'll be helpful to me. So, thank you. All righty. Well, the first item on our agenda this evening is public communication. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us for up to two minutes, an individual?
Yes, we have Mr. Dale Feek. Dale?
Can you all hear me? I can't hear you.
We can hear you just fine.
I can hear you. I don't know if anybody else on Zoom can hear you, but...
Diane, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, Chair Harrington.
Yes, I can hear everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fai. So, we're in public comment right now, and Mr. Dale Feek is about to address us. Mr. Feek?
... thirty seconds or whatever to organize my papers. Madam Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, spokesperson and project director for Hillsborough Air and Water. I'm also chair and spokesperson for Washington County Citizen Action Network. I sent you a couple of emails, one very early this morning, and it had to do with Representative Ken Helms and Environment Quality Commission Chair Kathleen George and Senator Jeff Merkley. I gave you active links to the conference I went to having to do with water. Please take a look at those. It's stuff you may not get any other place, okay? So, please open the links, at least skim them if you don't listen to the whole speeches. Ken Helms talked about the book Doom: Disaster in Democracy, and he is real concerned about the world, the earth, and climate change. And if you listen to him, you'll actually get his words. I bought the book. I haven't received yet. I'm going to read it. In the update I sent to you, I quoted sustainability manager Robin Strom, because I've been promoting the kilowatt machine, and she, it's part of their whole system. I didn't realize that. I'm being educated, as well as I'm trying to educate you. So, here it is, the kilowatt. It's how to actually measure energy use, and before you buy something, use that, too. And I gave you a handout related to that, and the appliances, you can check with that. I have a correction. I said that the legislature has a bill, and I named it wrong. It's called FATE in Transport, PFAS in Biosolids. It's a steady bill. So, that's very important to be aware of that bill. Thank you for letting me speak before you. One more thing. The city of Forest Grove did use the timer system, and Mary Wenzel got ahold of me, said it worked wonderfully. So, Scott, no, not Scott. No, what's the... No, the guy, Chuck. Chuck and Michael, who now works for the city of Forest Grove, got it working. It was very good.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. So, I don't see any other members in our audience that have signed up, so we'll go to our online, and we have Mr. Jim Long first up. Mr. Long, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to be here with you. I just, I'm, you know, volunteer time is precious, and I've just got together a letter that I will send you and an email. But let me start it. I remember former county administrator Dan Potter telling me over forty years ago how important suggestions were to operate the county. And here are a few suggestions and requests. Your CCI S and R Subcommittee unanimously feels that the Wildlife Habitat Assessment Guidelines should be established before proceedings to adopt clear and objective policies in ordinance 869B. If you remember, over two years ago, in 2020, there was contention that the Significant Natural Resources Ordinance 869A was dependent upon the Habitat Assessment Guidelines prior to, before its approval. We request that, we request to receive both the original and revised Habitat Assessment Guidelines that have been used over the past decades. And we understand that the kickoff with consultants for the Goal Five Inventory of SNRs will be soon, and we want to participate. So, I will send you an email about that, but I did want to get in our thoughts there from the Significant Natural Resources Committee of your Committee for Citizen Involvement that feel that, before you go forward with 869B, that there's, are a stat, you know, that you've developed your Habitat Assessment Guidelines, and we can take a good look at them and consider them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Would anyone else like to provide public comment on any other items of county business outside of the public hearings that are on the agenda for tonight? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Clerk Moss and members of our community. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of six items. One item from Clean Water Services, one item from Health and Human Services, one item from Housing Services, one item from the Sheriff's Office, and two items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission?
For approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda is passed unanimously, five to zero. Next, we have presentations. We have one presentation tonight. I'd like to invite up Latricia Tillman, our Chief Equity Officer, for the fourth calendar quarter, quarterly report, October through December 2022, from the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, also known as OEICE. OEICE. Hello, team members!
... team tonight. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board. My name is Latricia Tillman, Chief Equity Officer, and I'm excited to be here to present our eight quarterly reports, completing two years of quarterly reports. You all establish the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. And we'll be presenting with Amanda Garcia-Snell, our community engagement manager.
... Ashley Horn, our Equity Policy Manager, Kitty Kong, our Supplier Diversity Coordinator, and Melanie Fappell, our Partner Equity Coordinator from Health and Human Services. We have a lot to share in a limited amount of time, but we want to highlight our accomplishments and significant works in progress. And we work with community partners and internally in partnership with leaders at all levels in various departments, so I'd just like to begin with appreciation for all of the folks who contribute to the work we're reporting on tonight. Next slide. We have control.
You have the power.
We have the power. So, this is a timeline you have seen in several quarterly reports. We continue to share it because it is an important reminder of where we are in the long arc of history, which is being created every day, some of which advances our equity work and some of which pushes it back. I'm seeing many communities learning about and reclaiming cultural practices that existed long before colonialism as part of their healing, even while efforts are being made to restrict access to their history. Many of us honored the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. last week, which was a reminder that while we have made progress in many ways, we have a long way to go to address structural and economic challenges that keep people unequal. In his letter from a Birmingham jail, Dr. King noted that the transition from an obnoxious negative piece to a substantive and positive piece requires tension, as well as policy that exists to establish justice. Equity will exist when we can no longer predict outcomes by race, ethnicity, gender, class, and other social factors. Equity is the result of just and fair policymaking, diverse leadership who make and inform those policies, and a diverse workforce. Equity is not about exclusion or only focusing on one population or another. As we learn about Equity 2.0, we understand that we have to work toward goals for our entire community, better outcomes for all, while also investing and tailoring our governmental strategies to address the unique barriers that prevent different communities from achieving those shared goals. This requires us to understand the experiences of different communities and to recognize that programs and policies that work for some may not work for all. I've noted in past presentations that equity, diversity, and inclusion work is change work. We do this work because we are not satisfied with the status quo and because a solid equity practice helps build efficiency and effectiveness in our ability to serve the whole of Washington County. Your commitment to equity in 2020 created a mandate to shift from a familiar way of doing business and required that we ask new questions, unlearn the ways we are used to doing things, improve our approaches, informed by a rigorous review of data and a diversity of voices, and then to integrate what we learn in our evolving processes. As illustrated in the graphic on the left of the slide, change can impact our productivity, but ultimately, with discipline and a commitment to excellence, applying an equity lens in everything we do helps us to be more effective and efficient, extending our reach while reducing waste and rework to provide better services to the entirety of Washington County. The graphic on the right side of the slide has also been shared with you in relation to our upcoming strategic plan effort, but it also applies to our collective efforts to advance equity. We are seeing initial results, which you will hear more about shortly, related to structural, policy, and practice change, while also engaging in relational changes that expand how we engage our community and who informs our perspectives. And this also raises questions about power dynamics. These efforts are shifting our mental models, and as more and more leaders across every level of our organization and community are considering how our policies and processes If you remember nothing else in this presentation, this is the slide to focus on. The progress that we have made is possible because we have a highly qualified, committed, and diverse team of change agents. As you can see, our team is evolving. We saw two staff, Marcus Ford and Highland Edelman, move to new leadership roles in 2022, and the team continues to evolve and effectively advance the objectives of the Equity Strategic Action Plan your board adopted in 2021. We are truly fortunate to have such a strong team that leads with a deep understanding that the mission of our equity work is both about human beings and governmental systems reaching their full potential in service to what Dr. King referred to as beloved community. So, this timeline reflects some major accomplishments since your board adopted the equity resolution in 2020. And as you know, we've made quite a bit of progress, and I won't go into it point by point. However, I will note that in this past quarter, we added the milestone of launching the COVID racial equity work group as part of the multi-jurisdictional effort to align how Washington County and our partners in the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough embed equity into community engagement. And that's a great segue to turn it over to Amanda to talk about the accomplishments and works in progress of our community engagement team.
Thank you, Latricia. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Amanda Garcia-Snell, Community Engagement Manager. So, as a reminder, community engagement can and does take a variety of forms. This slide illustrates some of those examples. Similar to past years, I feel very proud to share with you a few of the specific accomplishments related to impacting policy, improving practice, and increasing equitable engagement that we have had over the course of the last twelve months. We worked on the equitable community engagement policy, which provides a framework for how we ensure that we're doing, that we are doing the best we can to create space for all people in Washington County to provide input into the decisions that affect them. This policy also helps us align with our jurisdictional partners as we engage community regarding our American Rescue Plan Act investments. About a year ago, you all approved the county's land acknowledgement language, recognizing the original stewards of Washington County's lands. We worked closely with Indigenous partners on this effort, and we're very appreciative of your board's leadership. We also led the extensive multilingual, multi-format community engagement for the county's reapportionment process, which provided opportunities for community to participate in the revision of their commissioner district boundaries. In regard to improving practices, notable activities include the increase of diverse members among the county's boards and commissions, which you'll hear more about in a few minutes. And in an effort to create more meeting accessibility, we also developed three hybrid meeting kits specifically for community participation organizations. These are go-bags, if you will, of technology components that are really needed to host hybrid CPO meetings in community-based organizations that may not otherwise be able to accommodate that type of meeting platform. We also accomplished some things regarding increasing equitable community, equitable engagement. Although my hope and intent is that everything the community engagement team does achieves this goal, here are a few specific highlights. We hosted four quarterly board town halls, both in virtual space and hybrid. We also provided support to a variety of departments on many different projects related to the engagement needs for those projects. With the addition of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, we were able to expand the civic leadership training opportunities to include two additional cohorts from two new providers, Unite Oregon and Apano. And we are also, we were also excited to support the expansion of the cultural heritage celebrations to include Juneteenth. Another work in progress related to impact policy concerns our Committee for Community Involvement, and we are nearing final service, nearing final completion of a service-level agreement with the Committee for Community Involvement. We have worked for months with the CCI and a consultant to develop this interim agreement, which is currently under legal review from county council. I say interim because this service-level agreement is really about outlining how we, the county and CCI, work together in an effort to maintain compliance with the statewide land use planning goal one, and simultaneously move forward with the CPO re-envisioning process. As you may recall, a little over a year ago, your board approved the CPO re-envisioning process, which includes the four phases on the slide. So, as a, for a status update, where are we now? Initially, when we set out to look at CPO re-envisioning, we anticipated a different timeline for reapportionment and for strategic planning than what is playing out in reality. We also did not anticipate the impact that our current budget projections would have on the CPO program. So, we still intend to address these four phases, and we'll come back to your board in the future with a proposal of options for re-envisioned CPO program based on what we can feasibly accomplish with our funding and capacity. Okay, so, additional works in progress, the, we are working on procedures for implementing the land acknowledgement language that you all approved, and then also working on procedures for the equitable community engagement policy, and we hope to bring those, or to have those completed in late spring. And we will continue to provide board engagement and any other engagement that your board requests of us. We also will really focus this year on in-depth community-based organization relationship building. This is something that we, that we started and we had plans for, and then was really impacted by COVID, our ability to get out in community and meet folks and really intentionally work with them. And this also, so this will be a priority for us this year and really dovetails nicely with the future strategic planning, community engagement, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act multi-jurisdictional community engagement. So, Boards and Commissions, demographic data improvement. As a reminder, we moved from quarterly to annual reporting of this data in 2022. We do keep an eye quarterly on the data and, and look for any big changes that we might want to lift up to you all. So far, that hasn't been necessary, so we're very pleased with that. We are still seeing an increase in applicants providing demographic data. I am not sure if you recall, but when we first started tracking this, only thirteen percent of applicants provided data. So, I'm very excited to see that trend continue. So, this slide shows a comparison of appointees from '21 to '22, and in terms of two of those demographic data points, age and/or the year of birth at time of application, and then the race or ethnicity that they've identified on their application. So, you can see that the categories continue to stay fairly level for age, but we do see an increase in younger applicants, people born in the 1980s, and so I think that's very exciting. We really are pleased to see younger people be interested in serving on boards and commissions. And then in race and ethnicity, we saw an increase in every single category, with the exception of people identified as white only. So, with the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, we continue, the, we continue to move forward. We just completed our fourth meeting. We're, Maria Cabia Rubio was selected as the committee, community co-chair, and so we're very excited for her leadership with the committee as they focus on strategic plan, budget, and legislative priorities. Thank you. And now I will hand it over to Ashley Horn.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board. My name is Ashley Horn. I serve as the Equity Policy Manager with the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community We have presented on the Equity Leadership Council structure, which you see on this slide, several times, so I won't go into detail, but do continue to lift it up here as a reminder because it illustrates the important pillars of our equity, diversity, and inclusion best practices that guide our work. Before I go into some key accomplishments of the equity portfolio, which I manage, I would like to invite Amanda to speak about the accomplishments of the Equity Leadership Council Committee focused on board and commission diversity and inclusion. Amanda?
Thanks, Ashley. Yeah, you can keep it. So, for 2022, the Boards and Commissions Committee focused on three areas: onboarding and training, all things bylaws is what they've called their Subcommittee, and recruitment and retention. This internal staff committee with representation from across the organization has been collecting information and assessing current practices to identify places in which we could have shared practices across the organization, because we currently don't have that. And so, we're also looking to align increasing diversity and inclusion among boards and commissions through those shared practices. The committee will refine this work into recommendations to take to the Equity Leadership Council and, for approval, and then roll these changes out across the organization.
Thank you, Amanda. And the remainder of the equity portion of our presentation today will focus on the work we are doing in partnership with several departments. You see them listed here, and we'll actually work through these as we move forward. So, looking at some key accomplishments and really focusing on our work to operationalize infrastructure to advance equity. The vanguard of our effort to operationalize equity infrastructure continues to be the Equity Leadership Council and its committees. It involves staff across the county and shared leadership of each of the committees and the council itself. Additional highlights of our partnership work to establish infrastructure include, but are not limited to, the launch of our evolved budget equity tool work. You may recall, last year, we introduced our first-ever budget equity tool, and this year, we have evolved it into two distinct tools, one for community-facing org units, another for internally-facing org units. We will share more about this in the future. And then another highlight worthy of celebration is our work with government relations and others to co-create our first-ever legislative equity tool. We did that prior to the start of the long legislative session. I'm going to hand it over now to Kitty Kong, our Supplier Diversity Coordinator with OEICE, to go deeper into our partnership work with Economic Development and Procurement in support of our county supplier diversity strategy. Kitty?
Thank you, Ashley. So, good evening, Commissioners. I am Kitty Kong. I'm your Supplier Diversity Coordinator out of the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. And as today is the third day of the Lunar New Year, I wanted to wish you all a very happy and prosperous Lunar New Year. So, today, I'm going to be offering several metrics to continue to illustrate how we are doing as a county to advance our supplier diversity. Our progress is a result of strong partnerships of our procurement and economic development, as well as departments who we are engaging in with to support the supplier diversity outreach efforts. So, this slide illustrates the percent of COVID spend from Q1 to Q2 from fiscal year '21-'22 to fiscal year '22-'23. On the left side, you see an increase in Q1 from 0.8% to 1.8% since last year to this year. And on the right side, you see an aggregate, and this is a baseline that we will keep tracking as we continue to work through the available data. We are able to learn more about the COVID spend within departments, which can help us establish that baseline to work from. And so far this year, we have actually paid forty-two COVID suppliers. So, with the help of our Equity Data Coordinator, Anna Menon, we're starting to learn more ways of illustrating the data that we have to tell our story. So, this is a new chart that we're sharing here that illustrates the percent of spend by department with current COVID suppliers. And so, this is a great start to creating that baseline to measure against as we look for, toward the spend year after year. Washington County budgets $313 million for capital projects, primarily in our land use and transportation. So, increasing COVID spend in that area would have a significant impact on the equitable economic development in the county and our region. There are several departments that do not have currently significant COVID spend in businesses, so we are going to work with them over the coming years to help them connect with relevant COVID suppliers. These charts here show the increase of supplier registered in our OpenGov solicitation site. So, on the left is the increase of supplier registration, which is important because this is where we post our needs for goods and services in the forms of RFPs and bids. So, their registration is how they know that we're looking to contract with them. And you can see we have increased the supplier registration year over year. So, the more suppliers who see our solicitations will lend to more bids and proposals, which is going to lend to more contracting opportunities for a variety of suppliers, which means a more competitive pricing for us. So, we continue with outreach and education. We're going to see that number grow year over year as well. On the right chart, you're going to see how the suppliers identify themselves in our OpenGov. And so, here's a breakdown of the different identities of the businesses who have registered in the OpenGov system. This is a graphic that's illustrating a frame-up of what the reality of procurement equity is by illustrating at a very high level the ecosystem. So, you can see there are so many intersecting areas of community and work that coexist and collaborate to contribute to procurement equity. So, as we break down the ecosystem into simpler buckets, and this is by no means a comprehensive illustration, you can see that a lot of these are interconnected systems that we're working in. Something I was not able to illustrate here, because it would be very overlapping and hard to read, is how, like, some of these sectors intersect across the screen. So, just to give you a high-level example, BOLI is part of a government... So just to give you a high-level example, BOLI is part of a governing statute, but it also intersects with budgeting. It also intersects with capital projects, planning, contracting processes, and construction as well as data tracking. So it intersects multiple sectors. And something else that I also wanted to highlight is that, as you can see, this is a complex ecosystem, and internal processes are just as important as external relationships. We often talk about removing the barriers for suppliers, but to achieve equity, we have to also address our internal barriers as well because our people are also part of this ecosystem. And so as we are working toward developing equity and procurement, and equity work is disrupting business as usual, is also addressing all the pieces and processes in each of the So where are we right now? I'm going to highlight a couple of some of our notable outcomes that we've had done so far. So since May of 2021, we've worked on laying the groundwork for a lot of initiatives and establishing relationships in our supplier community. We increased our supplier engagement through education, and as you saw on the previous slide, it's a very complex system for us, let alone for the public. We continue to provide ongoing outreach through community-based organizations, which drives our increase in supplier engagement since 2020. Our investment into community-based organizations and their program builds the trust in the supplier community. So as we show what is important to them is important to us. We held our first ever Westside Open House on October 12th of 2022 in partnership with the city of Hillsborough. And this was an opportunity to bring the supplier community out to us here at Washington County and provide them with, excuse me, education resources and familiarity, much like how the board engages with the community through town halls. And so what we are more confident in engaging in are with things we understand. And so we plan to grow that program year over year as well. We're excited to launch the Construction to Careers Pathways Program with our coordinator, Charles, whose birthday was actually yesterday. So I'm really excited to get to work with him on onboarding and getting our software implemented. We continue to work through and learn about the data from what we track and how we can improve. We have to work more regionally to work toward alignment, and this is a huge part to making contracting with any government agency more approachable. When we all have common language and familiar processes, it lessens the learning curve burden on the public. And so I want to also thank you all for your ongoing commitment to supporting the ecosystem that is equity and procurement and diversifying our supplier partnerships. I'm going to pass this back over to Ashley.
Thank you, Kitty. It is inspiring to see the advancements in the procurement equity portfolio, and we appreciate your leadership in this work. Thank you. All right. I'm going to talk about some of our partnership work with Human Resources. A significant amount of the work we are advancing is in partnership with HR, Human Resources. Several collaborative areas of work are listed in this slide, most of which are in service to implementation of our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, or EEOP for short. I'm going to talk through some of these. You have heard us speak about our work with Human Resources, Equity Leadership Council, and some of its committees and staff across the county to update Washington County's bilingual pay policy. This policy update is important because it is part of our work to implement client civil rights and to live into reality the board's commitment in the February 2020 Equity Resolution to ensure that Washington County's workforce reflects the diversity of the communities we serve. It is with great pleasure that I share that as of end of December 2022, we conducted 26 listening sessions with bilingual staff across the county, three manager-supervisor listening sessions, and we administered and analyzed comprehensive surveys to identify where we have opportunities for improvement in eligibility, workload, and management, and compensation of our bilingual staff. We have shared findings and vetted draft policy concepts with stakeholders and are writing the updated policy now. You will hear more about this in our future board reports. We are also partnering with Human Resources to identify and address equitable talent acquisition process improvements and develop the diversity recruitment policy to ensure our workforce reflects the diversity of the communities we serve. We continue to work with HR to finalize the Employee Resource Group, or ERG, policy and associating procedures, which we plan to post for all staff review in March. We also continue to work with learning and development leadership in HR to support implementation of the discrimination, harassment, and retaliation free workplace training. By end of December 2022, 79% of all county staff completed that training, and 99% of all people leaders or those who supervise completed it. Lastly, we are partnering with learning and development leadership to finalize our Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, Learning and Development, RFPQ, or Request for Pre-Qualification, to ensure that the county has a vetted list of equity, diversity, and inclusion vendors to work with in support of our learning and development needs across the county. In this slide, I want to highlight some additional partnership work and thinking about how we're building and supporting departmental equity leadership and capacity across the county. Some of you may have heard about the Land Use and Transportation Equity Position, a very exciting development. It's a LUT Equity Senior Program Coordinator position focused on equity work, and it expands the number of departments with a dedicated co-managed equity position across the county. With this addition, we now have dedicated equity leadership roles in three of our four largest departments, and we are working in partnership to identify gaps and opportunities, support capacity development, and develop policies and plans to advance equity, diversity, and inclusion. All right. We want to give the floor to Melanie Foppell, our partner in this work. She serves as the Equity Coordinator with HHS, and she's going to share some of the important equity work that she is leading in HHS in coordination with OEICE. Melanie?
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Melanie Foppell, and I am the Equity Coordinator for the Department of Human Health and Services. I am grateful for this opportunity to share a little bit about some of the important and collaborative work occurring between HHS and OEICE. To begin, I do want to acknowledge that since 2017, HHS's strategic plan has focused on incorporating equity into their daily work, specifically leading with race. So with the establishment of OEICE in 2020, HHS as a department was incredibly primed, ready, eager for this type of partnership. Additionally, my specific position as an Equity Coordinator is intentionally housed within HHS's Director's Office, and I report directly to the Director herself. When creating this role, HHS leadership felt it was important to elevate this position and make very clear their commitment to acknowledging, supporting, and moving forward EDI work. Now, in terms of the collaboration with OEICE, it has been incredibly fruitful. It has occurred in many different spaces. OEICE has welcomed me as a participant in their monthly staff meetings and quarterly retreats. Additionally, Latricia, Ashley, the Director of HHS, Marissa Mantle, and myself meet on a monthly basis to talk through the progress of current projects, but also look for future opportunities for partnerships, some of which are listed on the slide. For the first point, prior to my joining the department, the HHS Equity Department Group had already researched, reviewed, and created for themselves a glossary of EDI terms. We are now in the process of partnering with OEICE to create a dissemination and feedback plan of that glossary across the county. Secondly, over the summer, my colleague and I, Eva Haas, met with close to a dozen HHS staff groups to review our current approach to language access. And that data, when shared with OEICE, really confirmed the need and opportunity of hiring a county-level language access coordinator who can systematically look at approaches to ensure timely and high-quality translations and interpretation support. Once that individual is hired, we are looking forward to partnering with them and OEICE for the development of HHS-specific Limited English Assistance Policy implementation plans. And finally, with other org units, HHS is working with OEICE to complete the budget equity tool. However, given my specific role, we are in a position to, as a department, identify and create data collection systems that will help us better capture how funds within HHS are being spent on EDI-focused initiatives. So again, this is just some of the highlights of the current collaborative work between HHS and OEICE. We look forward to building upon our already strong partnership and really furthering this work across the department and the county as well. So with that, I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity, Chair and Board of Commissioners, and I will yield the floor back to Latricia.
Okay. So I'm going to bring us home and conclude our presentation. Okay, thank you. By highlighting some of our work related to COVID resilience efforts funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and you've seen this slide before with the arrows kind of focusing in on where we are focusing. All right, next slide, please. As noted earlier, we are working in partnership with the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough with the supportive espousal strategies and a host of culturally specific and culturally responsive community-based organizations. Even though many of us have returned to some kind of normal living, we are continuing to hear from culturally specific community partners that COVID is still having a significant impact on Black, Latino, Latinx, Pacific Islander, Asian, African, and other immigrant and refugee communities. Per the board direction to center equity, we are gathering feedback to help assure ARPA investments reflect the needs of communities who have borne a disproportionately negative burden of COVID over the past two years. This multi-jurisdictional partnership creates an ongoing structure for conversation and engagement beyond the pandemic resilience efforts to assure that our investments meet the needs of our most vulnerable community members. Next slide. Since launching the COVID Racial Equity Work Group in late October, basically evolved out of work that had been happening throughout the pandemic, we have engaged with more than 80 partner organizations in a deeper understanding of the impact of COVID. We heard themes related to workforce, be it for behavioral health care, the need for living wage jobs, nonprofit staff shortages. Basically, every sector is identifying workforce needs. We heard things about housing, including rent assistance, that continuing need, the continuing concern about evictions even after the payment of rent assistance, the development, acquisition of affordable housing, affordable home ownership, housing where people can operate childcare, foster care, or senior care businesses, or easy access from one's home to healthcare. Housing has been a very consistent theme. We heard that prioritizing needs is difficult because all of these needs intersect in the lives of individuals, families, and communities. And community especially noted that culturally specific investments and programming are key, in particular to maintain cultural traditions and to address the compounding impacts of COVID-related isolation. COVID was financially devastating to many, but had a significantly larger economic impact on Black, Latino, Latin, Latinx, Indigenous, Pacific Islander, and multiple immigrant and refugee communities. These communities were already impacted by the racial wealth gap, which only widened throughout the COVID pandemic, and the COVID Racial Equity Work Group has highlighted the need for ARPA investments that help close the racial wealth gap. And then finally, we are also helping to implement the allocation of ARPA funds to help build the infrastructure in support of civil rights compliance. And this brings me back to my comments at the beginning of this presentation. The culmination of the civil rights movement in 1964 was the Civil Rights Act. At its core, this act recognized that while Blacks, Mexicans, Native American tribes, and Indigenous people, Chinese and Japanese immigrants, and others all paid taxes and contributed to the wealth of the United States, they did not have access to the benefits of government, economic, and societal systems they paid into, be it libraries, transportation, financial systems, elections, public safety, and the list goes on and on. Part of the transformative power of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 is that federal funding requires civil rights compliance of all funded recipients, us, and our subrecipients. So we are building out the infrastructure needed to support a more systematic compliance in the county as well as with our funded partners. And this includes the language access work that Melanie just referenced, as well as our ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, compliance, and client civil rights. Beyond compliance, oh, beyond compliance, we're looking at the allocation of ARPA funds to provide tailored support for programs to help build equity, culturally relevant strategies, and community-informed evaluation into our ARPA allocations. And then we are continuing to focus on community-level outcomes. Data that we can disaggregate by race and ethnicity and other social factors will help us understand where we have avoidable gaps in our outcomes, as well as where we are making progress and seeing a return on our investment. ARPA has been and continues to be a significant support for equity, both in the mandate set by the federal government to center equity and in the ability to leverage those funds to fast-track and build out our important foundations for Washington County's Equity Resolution. So with that, I will conclude with appreciation for my co-presenters, Amanda, Ashley, Kitty, and Melanie. And on behalf of the entire Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement, just want to share our continuing appreciation for the strategic leadership of the board and the partnership and support of our community and our county partners. And with that, Chair Harrington, I'll turn it back to you for any comments, questions, or feedback.
Thank you, team. So Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you for this comprehensive report. It's well done, and I appreciate understanding the different pieces. So thank you for that. And got another quarter looking at us, right? So here we go.
Here we go.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair. I don't, I don't have a question, Chair. I was just going to say presentations, and I'm not sure if I heard Kitty before. I think I've heard everyone else before, but Kitty, you have a powerful voice. So I just, I just wanted to compliment your voice, how it was coming. I think I've heard everyone else before and complimented, and today was my first time hearing, so you've got a great voice, Kitty, and I appreciate your presentations, everyone.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, I just echo those comments. Latricia, I always have good conversations with you, and I like to know what it is that you and your department are doing, and certainly I took a lot of notes, and I'll circle back with you, but good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. It really highlights that there is a lot of really good work happening as a result of having our Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. And I really appreciate how you're doing work on, in multiple aspects that are really helping us improve our service delivery to our community as well as improving our practices over the course of time. I do have a couple of questions on Slide 31, if I could, that talks about partnerships with HR and the implementation of the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, and you did a great job of summarizing that for us at a work session. When you presented this slide, it talked about the different policies that you're working on. And I wondered, Ms. Angie, do these policies come before the board or are they just administrative?
The bilingual pay policy will be coming before the board. In addition to the policy, we will be bringing the procedures with the policy due to, I'm confident that the board is going to want to understand kind of the mechanics behind that. In my conversations with OEICE, we are hopeful that that will be able to come back, will be able to come back to the board probably, or for a first look, in quarter two, quarter three of this year so that we can move forward with the bilingual pay, getting guidance from the board. Relative to the diversity recruitment policy, we are determining what part of that policy is an internally focused procedure versus a policy. So more information will come back to your board, and underscoring that all of the bullet points on Slide points on Slide 31 are also information requests that your board has provided, wanting follow-up, follow-up for, follow-up on, excuse me, from myself.
Okay, okay. Just heads up to everybody, May is a real marathon month, and that's smack dab in Q2, so, be careful, that's all, because it's really important work, and the board wants to make sure that we're able to absorb what is happening and provide you thoughtful input. So just wanted to make that clear.
Chair, can I just, just for your information, and also the board's direction has already been given to staff, that May is a very busy month for the board with your budget reviews, and that is probably overly ambitious even for staff, because staff are still busy with those aspects. So we are trying to manage your calendars for the month of May, understanding your workload.
Yep, thank you. So I have just a couple more questions, and it relates to community engagement. Oh, so Amanda, you may have to come up. It's all aimed at helping me, bring me along, and like I said, there is a lot of good work happening, and I do appreciate how on Slide Eight, the community engagement opportunities, you continue to remind all of us, not just board members and current audience members, but everyone in the community, that we have many different ways to participate for community engagement. My question really stems, well, I guess if I looked at Slides, maybe Slide 19, I'm not sure. So I have looked at our website for ways to participate, CPO, CCI, and in some ways, it's simple or straightforward information, but on the other hand, it left me wondering. And some of this may be underway, but I'm wondering, okay, we have the CPO and the CCI, and what is the service level agreement? What is it that the current volunteer leadership or the would-be volunteer leaders, what construct, what resources are there to help them lean into taking on the role of being a volunteer? And I didn't see much information on our website that helped encourage, if I put myself in the shoes of that former CPO resident, which I was decades ago, to really lean into it. I did see on Slide 19, you talked about hybrid meeting kits. So there is, I know that you've, the CPOs pre-COVID were all in-person, right, through COVID, having Zoom support, and now hybrid support as well. So it's a more complex model than I experienced when I participated in my local CPO, and I heard you introduce me to having go-bags available. So I'm just wondering, where's the information easily available when folks may be looking at things on non-business days and non-work days? So I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, that's a great question. We are still working on bringing information onto the new website format for the CPO program, and so it is pretty bare minimum or bare bones right now, with the intent of adding more information. I'm not sure how familiar you were with the previous iteration of the website, but it was a little bit of information overload in some regard, and some stuff was outdated. And so we're really, a lot of documents to update, and we're continuing to do that. And we do hear pretty regularly from CPO leaders and from CCI about things that they'd like, that they feel are more pressing than other things on our big list, and so we try to accommodate those as we are learning to use the new, as the OEICE team is learning to use a new website.
Well, I can say that all five of us are hearing from different people in our CPOs, and we don't know what to expect. So that's why I went back to the December 2021 presentation at our work session about CPO revisioning. So that's where it would be helpful to have some idea of really what is happening. We need, beyond saying, well, wait for the strategic plan, you know, it's like, what is available today? So that's the kind of need that I have, to navigate the space of how things are today and knowing that there will be changes moving forward. So I just want to make sure we, internally, and the board, and our community members have the opportunity of being on the same page, and that isn't my experience today, and I'd like to help that.
I believe there's just one final step to finalizing the service level agreement, and once that is finalized, then we'll be able to make the adjustments in terms of the agreements that are, we're able to commit to.
But I heard that pertained only to the CCI, so I don't know if you're using those interchangeably or not, but I'm not.
No, the service level agreement is specific to CCI. Initially, when we started that conversation, that wasn't how we were thinking about it, but as we met, as we continued to meet with the consultant and with CCI, it became clear that that's a different need than what CPOs might have. And so the plan is to develop or to finalize the CCI service level agreement first as an interim place, because we knew that the re-envisioning process would take a long time to get through all of these phases, which we really haven't started, aside from starting to look at boundary population with the latest census numbers, we've started to look at what are the populations in each of the boundaries, but that's about as far as we've gotten.
So I understand the re-envisioning process, don't know what kind of timeline it's on, but we have CPOs today. How are we intending to them, for them to operate today, and what resources are there for them to operate today? None of that is publicly available to me or anybody else, okay? So that between now and these phases yet to come, the CPOs are able to function, and that's a total mystery to me right now. It's not comfortable, so that's why I'm asking. I need some more information. Changing the topic entirely, I really appreciate the work, Kitty, Ms. Kong, that you're doing on the supplier diversity, on the COVID information. I'd like to see some dollar amounts called out there, not just percent numbers, and we've been at this for two years now. We, Ms. Angie, I think it's high, we have all the ingredients for an annual report. I'm surprised we don't have one. We have all the ingredients for it. We need to start not just holding ourselves accountable, but ensuring our community knows, and we're not reinventing the wheel. Metro's been doing this for over a decade. Let's leverage that. So that's something I'd like to see us do, and that includes the, where did I, oh, there's capital, services, and supplies as three different categories that we can speak to, because while some of the departments may have small capital budgets, they may also have larger budgets for services or supplies, and I think there's opportunity for us to leverage that. Like I said, a lot of really good work happening on multiple fronts. I'm grateful for the work, and I appreciate how, Ms. Tillman, your team is embedded in work, not only internally through our departments, but also with our additional partners. So keep going, you're making a difference, just like our departments who deliver services are making, other services are making a difference in people's lives each and every day. That's all I had. Thank you. All right, very informative presentation, and now we move on to our public hearings, and we have three of them tonight. The first one is with regard to ordinance, excuse me, let me get my papers out of the way. It's with regard to ordinance 882, and with all things land use and transportation ordinances, we first have to ask for a motion to read ordinance, engrossed ordinance number 882 by title only.
So move.
Second. All those in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr, could you do us the honors?
Of course, Chair Harrington. A engrossed ordinance number 882, an ordinance amending the transportation system plan element of the comprehensive plan relating to an extension of Tile Flat Road.
Thank you. Welcome to our subject matter experts on this ordinance. Do you have a staff report for us tonight?
We do, thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name is Erin Wardell, and I am the Planning and Development Services Manager. With me is Steve Kelly, Senior Transportation Planner. This evening is your third public hearing on A engrossed ordinance number 882. This ordinance was continued from August 2022 to allow for consideration by Metro Council of a proposed urban growth boundary expansion. This expansion was proposed by the City of Tigard, and at the time of your August hearing, the board felt that allowing that process to finish before you made your final decision was the right way to go at that time. At that time, we thought that Metro would be making their decision in November, and so we continued the hearing to today. We now expect Metro to make that decision on February 2nd, so we're still a couple of, or a week out from that decision being made. So when we get to the end of the presentation, you'll hear our staff recommendation, which is to continue the ordinance again, but we'll go through background information before we get there. You have held several hearings already on this ordinance, and so this slide summarizes the prior hearings and actions. The Planning Commission hearing on December 15th, 2021 resulted in a motion to not recommend the ordinance to the board. That was on a vote of two to four. The board held their first hearing on January 18th of 2022 and continued to March 1st. At the March 1st hearing, the board directed engrossment in order to respond to some case law that we were made aware of through testimony. The board held their first engrossment hearing on July 26th, and the second engrossment hearing on August 2nd. So today is our third engrossment hearing through your continuation that was recommended last time. Little bit of background on this ordinance as a refresher. This collector road extension was initially identified through City of Beaverton's Cooper Mountain planning process. It was further evaluated through two different county-led studies, the Cooper Mountain Transportation Study and the Urban Reserves Transportation Study. Both of those studies emerged from community engagement that we did at the time of the Transportation Future Study, where residents of the Cooper Mountain area identified a significant amount of growth and increased travel demand within their area. So Washington County engaged in these two studies to evaluate solutions for a connected and resilient transportation system in the Cooper Mountain area. Most of the collector facility is included in the concept plan that City of Tigard has prepared as a part of asking Metro for the urban growth boundary expansion, and we continue to coordinate with the City of Tigard on planning for this area. This roadway extension is also specifically referenced in the urban planning area agreement we have with the City of Tigard. That's the agreement by which we have given Tigard the authority to plan for the area. Within the Cooper Mountain area, there are a number of recent urban growth boundary expansions, and a significant amount of growth has occurred there in recent years. The proposed transportation system plan amendments would extend Tile Flat Road as a collector south from the intersection of Shoals Ferry Road to connect with Roy Rogers Road at Bull Mountain Road. We would additionally add a refinement area for the area south of there. We have identified a need for future transportation connectivity within this area, but there are some challenges, and so a refinement area gives us direction to further study the area as more information is made available. This is a long-range improvement to our transportation system. It's not envisioned necessarily in the near future, but it is necessary to allow for orderly planning. This improvement is unlikely to be built until the area is brought into the urban growth boundary, which may actually happen fairly soon, depending on Metro Council action and development begins to occur in the area, which is likely five to 10 more years out, depending on how quickly the comprehensive planning for the area happens. A little bit more information about the urban growth boundary expansion. There is an area, the blue area identified on the map is what is called urban reserve. Urban reserve areas are eligible to be added into the urban growth boundary. The blue area you see on this map is what the City of Tigard has asked for as a part of their urban growth boundary expansion request. The areas that are identified in more of a tan color are what's called rural no reserve or rural undesignated. Those lands are not eligible to be brought into our regional urban growth boundary until 75% of our original identified urban reserves are brought in. So that's a very long-range change to our urban growth boundary. The board did submit a letter of support for Tigard's concept plan. Tigard initially asked for the urban growth boundary expansion in 2021. Metro has decided not to do a straightforward urban growth boundary expansion as they've done before, they are leaning towards doing a land swap instead, where land that is currently within the urban growth boundary in Clackamas County would essentially be exchanged for this land. So the urban growth boundary would remain approximately the same amount of size, same amount of housing capacity, but land adjacent to the City of Tigard would be brought in instead. So it's an interesting process, it's not something the metro region has done before, and it's taken a little bit of time for them to get through their process, so that explains some of the delay. A little bit more information about that UGB expansion process. So Metro's chief operating officer has recommended the land exchange instead of the UGB expansion, primarily based on the assessment of need. The land exchange is allowed by state statute, but again, has not been done in the metro urban growth boundary previously. Metro staff did identify the lands that would be used for the exchange, and those are in Clackamas County, and we're expecting that decision on February 2nd. There is no statutory required timeline on this, and so Metro Council essentially set their own timeline for it. We have received extensive community input throughout the hearings for this ordinance, both the Planning Commission and the board. This slide summarizes the primary themes that we've heard through that community engagement. We've heard a number of concerns about the environmental impact of a new road. We've heard questions about whether or not a new road is necessary for this area. We've also had a lot of questions about the timing for funding and building the road, questions about growth occurring in this area, significant amount of growth has already occurred there, but questions about future growth occurring after a new road is built. We received a number of technical questions about the process of taking an exception to statewide rules and why it's allowed in some circumstances, and we've heard concerns about the proposal to bring these lands into the urban growth boundary. It has been, I think, challenging for the community to have the conversation about the potential urban growth boundary expansion, or now land swap, and the conversation about this road at the same time. I think that's created some confusion. So we've heard a lot of input about the urban growth boundary expansion. Of course, that is not your board's decision to make, and so we've directed those comments to Metro as a part of their process for determining whether or not to do that. We are working really closely with the City of Tigard throughout this process as well, since this is an area that's been identified to be future City of Tigard. So we're working with them on that. Their concept plan does include most of this collector facility as well, so that's something that we expect to continue to work with them as they move into comprehensive planning. And finally, our staff recommendations. So this evening, we recommend that you conduct the public hearing, and then in keeping with your prior continuance to wait until after Metro Council has made their final decision, we are recommending a continuance to March 21st. We think they'll be done with the decision by then. It will give staff time to digest what their decision means for this ordinance and for planning in this area, and we can come back to you with a staff recommendation at that time.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I do. Could we go to Slide Six, please? Could we go to slide six, please?
There we go.
Thank you. So each of these top blue areas both illustrate the River Terrace 2.0 area that Tigard has requested be brought into the UGB through this latest process, right? So we have gotten a lot of feedback about the proposal to put Tile Flat Road in south of Shoals Ferry Road. I'm going from upper left down.
Right.
And into the blue area. I'm wondering, have we ever thought about advancing this work, but only focusing on the blue area that will be part of the urban reserve and leave to future generations of leaders to deal with the connection once that current rural land is possibly part of the urban growth boundary in future decades ahead?
So we have considered that as an option, and that is something the board could direct us to do when we come back at a future hearing through an engrossment of this ordinance. Along the north-south edge of that blue line where it starts is an existing road called Vandermost Road. It's essentially a rural driveway at this time. And so that is shown as a collector as well within Tigard's concept plan, and it would essentially run along the edge of their new urban area. So it is possible for us to create a future intersection at that location with this collector facility and have the connectivity up to Shoals Ferry Road at that location. It is likely that the missing piece of it, then, the piece connecting over to Shoals Ferry, would be a longer-term improvement. Quite frankly, it probably will be regardless of whether we identified in our plan at this time or not, simply because of the cost and the fact that it won't be supported by adjacent development, as the line within the blue area likely will be if it comes into the urban growth boundary.
But given that the sentiment of the community has been so negative with regard to the impact within that brown area, and it's like, okay.
One consideration we could make is to identify that instead as a refinement area, as we did for the undesignated area to the south. A refinement area does not indicate a specific line, but it does indicate that there may be a need for a transportation facility in this area at some point, and we could do further study. So that's another option. Rather than just leaving it off, we can identify further study. The benefit of a refinement area is that it can manage community expectations as well, because we think these may be really long-term improvements. But at some point, properties may turn over, new residents may be in the area. They may not know about the history of this planning work.
Well, my concern is the way that we've been proceeding has just been causing so much angst. And, you know, it's like, that's so far into the future. I've heard you say, right, that this is in the long term and whatnot, but that is not comforting to some people. So it's like, okay. So the approach has been to wait until Metro makes their decision, and then we can decide if we're going to take action. But I want to get out in the open that with everything I've learned, I don't see myself voting to support the ordinance, the A engrossed ordinance as is. But there could very well be an approach if that area is brought into the UGB to figure out, okay, so how do we meet the transportation goals for that area as it connects to the larger urban area? So because that's just part of urban servicing. So that's just why I was asking these questions. And it's something that I would be interested in. So nonetheless, we're here tonight on A Engrossed Ordinance Number 882. Thank you for the presentation. And we need to go through the public hearing. So just before I open the public hearing, is there, are there any other questions?
I do have one, thank you. What's not showing on these maps, because we're not involved in it, is if you go north of Shoals Ferry, between 175th and Tile Flat, which used to be very rural, there's nothing but developments going in. It's solid in there now, and there's, I always thought maybe there was some way to reroute that particular corridor so it would hit Tile Flat in a different location. But that's foreclosed. So there's no way to hit Tile Flat other than some way that would move over there. In regard to the blue areas, we have an understanding with Tigard that we support their inclusion.
They're asking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're asking. And we've said we support that before Metro. If that's a condition by us, if we were to remove that tan area, and again, it's way out in the future, so I understand the request, but how do we preserve that corridor? Because frankly, it isn't going to work unless you have something that's going to get through there. So can we still enforce that condition if there was just a big Jersey barrier or something at the very end of that road? Because you still want them to put it in, you want that facility to be in. But where it stops there to the west, you know where I'm talking about, the blue area, can we still condition Tigard? Because I like that condition, that there's some facility there. It's going to be needed in the future, we all know that. So that's my question.
I think that that could be a part of future agreements with the City of Tigard. I think it would just make a lot of sense if there's a future intersection there, and if we know that that other parcel may come into the urban growth boundary at some point in the future when 75% of the original reserves have been added to the urban growth boundary, urban reserves. So I think that that could be something that we have that future conversation with City of Tigard about. When we know within the urban area that a road is likely to connect, say Phase 1 and then Phase 2 of a subdivision, we sometimes put up the signs that say this road may be extended in the future, again, to manage community expectations about something that's not intended to be a, you know, cul-de-sac in the long term. I don't know if that would be an option in this particular situation, because if it's not reflected in our plan, then we don't know for sure that that would necessarily happen. But it is something that we could have future conversations and agreements with Tigard about.
Yes, you can ask anything.
Just to follow up, then, with your suggestion of making that brown area a refinement area. So I think that's a good idea. I like it. I like that when you proposed it at a previous ordinance. So how would we go about doing that at this stage?
So if we wait until the Metro Council decision on February 2nd and come back at that March date, we actually will change, will likely ask the board to engross the ordinance again. And the purpose of that engrossment could be to reflect that change that you're asking for, if we want to change that to a refinement area. The other purpose of the engrossment, though, would be to remove the exception corridor exhibit from the area in blue, because we would no longer need an exception, because it's now within the urban growth boundary. So we would need to do a little bit of reworking on the ordinance anyway, as a part of that. We also would change our findings, because at that time, if we are only showing a new collector facility within an area that's now in the urban growth boundary, and we're doing refinement areas for what's in the undesignated area, we no longer need to take an exception to statewide planning rules. So our findings would be shorter.
I'll just wait till you come back to the next session, okay?
Yep, well, stay tuned to see what happens at Metro. Yes, indeed. Okay. Are we ready to open the public hearing, folks? I think so. I don't see any other commissioner questions. So with that, I'll open today's public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us?
We do, Madam Chair. We didn't have anyone sign up in the room for this public hearing, so we will move to the online portion. And I will start with the people who signed up. First up, we have Anuksha Gardner. I apologize if I upset your first name. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington, esteemed commissioners. Thank you for allowing me time to read my testimony into the record tonight. My name is Anuksha Gardner, and I'm a resident of Washington County, City of Beaverton. I'm the Strategic Partnerships Manager for the Street Trust and serve as our primary liaison to Washington County. The Street Trust is committed to helping you, you, our elected leaders, complete a safe, low-carbon multimodal transportation system that contributes to equity and access, opportunity, health, and prosperity for people and communities in Washington County across the metro Portland region and beyond. Thank you to the Commission for carefully considering community concerns and rejecting ordinance 883 earlier this year. It is the Street Trust's hope that you will not delay a vote on this issue any further and will reject ordinance 882 proposals. We encourage you to refer to the letter submitted to you this week by our partners at 1,000 Friends of Oregon and signed by the Street Trust and Walton River Keepers. The Street Trust is focused on increasing transportation options and reducing dependence on driving alone. In large parts, we do not have to expand roadways and capacity for driving as proposed. Please allow me to highlight a few points. We are concerned about disrupting the community connections within the urban growth boundary exchange area of River Terrace 2.0 and impacts on providing affordable housing at densities high enough to support transit options. Washington County has grown dramatically in this region, and it is clear there are natural resource issues related to stormwater and a lack of regional transportation planning coordination. We hope that Washington County and Metro could work together and coordinate carefully and considerate development, especially given how close the proposed road would be to UGB. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, for your hard work on behalf of our communities, and for thinking carefully about the potential impacts of these proposals on agricultural land use, transportation needs, natural areas, urban growth patterns, and climate impact.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brett Morgan. Brett, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Members of the Commission, Chair Harrington, thank you for having me this evening. As you remember, 1,000 Friends of Oregon and Partners have been engaged on these land use ordinances 882 and 883 for some time. And like Anuksha, I would like to refer you to our letter submitted on the record yesterday, as well as a letter I sent just earlier from the City of Tiger that I'll be referencing in my testimony. Excuse me, I have a bit of a cold. I just want to remind you that in the time we've been engaging on this subject for the better part of a year, the planning commissions have both failed ordinance 882 and 883 and recommended that you reject them as well. And in that time, you've also rejected the related and connected ordinance 883, which would have connected and built an eight-mile lane through, eight-mile road through rural lands. But I think the biggest thing I want to spend some time debunking or explaining is the connection that in the debate you all are having about the urban growth boundary exchange. As someone who's closely tracking the process of Metro currently, the process being put forward in these local land use ordinances is confusing local landowners and creating a confusing process for Metro as well as giving them uncertainty about the outcomes that the region could face if the land is brought into the urban growth boundary. I would also like to make light of a letter written in October of 2022 from the City of Tigard. In this letter, they highlight that the Tile Flat extension is merely accommodated within the River Terrace 2.0 concept plan, and it isn't needed at any capacity whatsoever. And I would encourage you to read through that letter in its entirety, because I think it helps explain the status quo in a lot more detail. And I think also, they make light of the fact that it would have dramatic impacts on their ability to deliver affordable housing, housing at densities great enough to support transit, and their ability to meet future climate goals given by the state. So the only reason you would vote to delay this ordinance currently in the status quo is what the reasons that the staff just provided, which is to remove the land use goal exceptions you would have to file on the rural lands. So it doesn't change the lands, it doesn't change the project. It only changes the legal considerations and the exposure that the county has on this issue. And you should hear the almost 200 pieces of testimony that folks have submitted on this particular ordinance, and don't delay, and please reject ordinance 883. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Brett. Next, we have Carrie Permenti. Carrie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. I'm asking you as well to vote no for ordinance 882 as you voted no for ordinance 883. This has been going on since way back in December 15th, 2021, when it was heard at your planning commission, and they voted no. They had a good reason. I've just heard Brett say from 1,000 Friends, the City of Tigard says they don't need it, another reason why this ordinance should be stopped now. We also know that there is climate change. We've all endured the last two summers, and by extending and bringing in new roads, we're just going to make that worse for future generations. There are solutions already there with existing roads. You just have to be creative. Think about the safety of your constituents and look at where to spend the money on existing roads to make them safer. Think about the safety of our environment for now and for future generations. We don't need more emissions, we don't need more roads. We need our rivers protected, we need our watersheds protected, and we need our family and protected. Well, it's already protected by statute. You could actually look at those blue areas if they do come into the metro area or urban growth boundary, I'm sorry. You could still connect up to 175th with an existing roadway that was presented years ago. And I think Commissioner Rogers, I've heard you say that that was a very good proposal. There are a lot of people that are going to be affected by this. Please take them into consideration. I appreciate that you will vote no tonight and stop the stress on folks, and then look at the better opportunities that exist. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie. Would anyone else in our online Zoom attending the meeting tonight wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing on ordinance 882? Give you just a moment to utilize the raised hand function. Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, for bringing our community members in tonight. So with that, do we have a... Yes, I do. I need to close the public hearing. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And next, we need a motion to continue consideration of A Engrossed Ordinance 882 to time certain March 21st, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Quick question about that date. Isn't that the week of spring break or is spring break the following week? Okay, just double checking. We have a motion and a second. It's a vote on an ordinance, so just to be careful, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Certainly can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Thrice?
Yes.
Commissioner Fai?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. All right, we'll come back to this topic in March. So we're going to move on to our next public hearing. This is another land use and transportation one, a completely different part of the county and a completely different ordinance number. Yes, of course, I'm stalling to give staff a chance to come up to the dais. But first, we need a motion to read ordinance number 880 by title only.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? That carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr, could you please read ordinance 889 by title only?
Yes, Chair Harrington. A engrossed ordinance number 889, an ordinance addressing minor amendments to the comprehensive framework plan for the urban area, the Bethany Community Plan, and the Community Development Code.
Thank you. Welcome, staff. Could you please bring us up to speed, those of us here in the room and online, on what we're talking about tonight?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thanks for having us here, Board of Commissioners. I'm Karina Rendy, Associate Planner from Community Planning, here to present the staff report for your board's first hearing on A Engrossed Ordinance Number 889. This ordinance proposes minor amendments to three elements of the county's comprehensive plan, the comprehensive framework plan for the urban area, also referred to as the CFP, the Bethany Community Plan, and the Community Development Code, or CDC. This presentation provides a brief overview of the ordinance, a timeline of this board's consideration of the ordinance, and staff's recommendation for the action your board will take tonight. The last time we came before your board, we presented a high-level summary of the amendments and the proposed changes in this ordinance, and these have, the proposed changes have since been incorporated into A Engrossed Ordinance Number 889. As a reminder, the amendments in this ordinance include housekeeping changes to correct things like grammar and numbering, technical fixes to address some code issues, and update plan and code provisions, as well as minor shifts in how we implement certain existing policies in plan and code provisions. Changes to the filed ordinance were requested by the public developers as well as our county surveyor, and we had a blend of recommendations from staff and planning commission, and the board materials included all of the amendments. So your board considered the proposed amendments and recommended changes on November 29th, and at that time you did direct us to engross the ordinance and provide notice and continue the hearing. Tonight is the first of the two required hearings for the engrossed ordinance, the second of which is scheduled for February 7th. Your board may adopt the ordinance if desired at the second hearing. Since staff prepared the materials for this hearing and submitted them to your board clerk, new comments have been received to request additional changes. Staff's recommendation tonight is to conduct the first public hearing for A Engrossed Ordinance Number 889 and continue the hearing to February 7th. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, do you have any questions on tonight's presentation? We had to fix a piece of trim.
Pre-molded.
Yes. So it wouldn't snag on our clothes. I have a question. Is this the right time for me to ask my question? Yes, thank you. So I read the public, the written public input that has been submitted for this and noticed that there were some comments taking issue with the ordinance talking about having cities move forward with the planning for the area and... So isn't it true that Metro requires new UGB expansion areas to be planned by cities?
Yes, we believe that's true. We actually checked the Title 14 requirements right before this meeting. We were standing in the hallway talking about that, and the language around urban growth boundary expansion request does specifically reference that cities will do it. Additionally, Washington County entered into or approved a resolution and order after the Urbanization Forum stating essentially that we expected future urban growth boundary expansions would be managed by cities and not by the county.
I think there's also other details. I think Washington County has a better plan.
Functional plan, yes, part of that.
Yes. So I'm not at all surprised that you made this change. That requirement to public comment should be, was very well discussed.
During the work of the Regional Choices Program and the Urban and Rural Reserves Program, so thank you very much for confirming that what you've proposed in this ordinance is, just matches up with requirements. Thank you. That takes care of my question. And with that, it's time for the public hearing. So I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify with us on this matter?
We did have one person in the room, but I no longer see them in the room. Would anyone else in the room like to provide public testimony on this public hearing, ordinance 889? Not seeing anyone come forward, so we will go to our online, and we have Pamela Maher. Pamela, can you hear us?
How do you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
I hear you great. Clerk Moss, I have a question. Since I represent other people, could I have more time? I don't need the full 10 minutes, but I'm going to need more than two, if I could.
I will defer that question to our county council.
All right, thank you.
The rules provide that if the chair recognizes a group, the chair can assign more time. I haven't heard identification of a group, just the vague statement that I represent other people doesn't seem to comply with the requirements of the rules.
The group that I am speaking for are the owners of 8550 Northwest 185th, which contains the alignment for Shackelford Road from North Bethany to 185th Avenue.
So Ms. Mayor, at the discretion of the chair, I will add on an additional two minutes, giving you a total of four minutes for your public testimony.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Okay, I'm speaking for myself and my 16 cousins who own this piece of property, which is, you know, a farm that we've had for decades. And what we've been trying to do with CPO 7 and the North Bethany community is solve a problem of connectivity when that neighborhood was designed. Our farm accommodates that road alignment as well as now has sewer along Rock Creek by Portland Community College, and it also is changed its status from being like a rural farming place into, I think it's, I think it's urban reserve. So that piece that, you know, was a farm for a really long time, and we didn't really have any plans to do anything but farm there now is sort of feeling the pressure of urbanization being, you know, close to so much housing. So we are just working with CPO 7 and North Bethany to address a need that they came to us with to see how we can all solve that problem. So they have a funding mechanism to fund roads within their neighborhood. It's, it provides for a tax of $1.25 per 1,000 of assessed values on their homes earmarked for road completion, so they have, you know, part of the money to put a bridge over Rock Creek and the Abbey Creek wetlands. Part of my documentation shows a picture of that street end with, which Commissioner Rogers was talking about, like a Jersey barrier, that's what he was talking about. If you can take a look at that picture, it's kind of interesting. And so, you know, as the pull of urbanization happens, we are just really basically trying to solve a problem that was, that CPO 7 brought to our attention. At this time, you know, no cities identified in the UPAA, and I understand the new rules, Chair Harrington, about that, but the language within this ordinance, it's, and the property is annexed to a city. We would like to ask that an exception to be made, that we don't have to comply with "and" to be annexed to a city. We got together with two cities, Hillsborough and Beaverton, and we attached the letter that they wrote to us within, you know, the documents for the public record. So there was not much interest by either of those cities to assume any coordination. And so, the Peter Kirk cousins, we are the owners of 185th Farm, and we just want to support CPO 7 and the North Bethany community. Adoption of this ordinance without the specific exclusion of Shackelford Road, urban reserve land to annex to a city, to a development application puts the, makes it really impossible to fund this road. So we just ask that you consider striking this language from the ordinance, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. And if you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them. Thank you so much. I seem to not be able to hear.
Thank you for your comment. We're moving on to see if we have any other community members who have signed, who would like to provide public comment for two minutes.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Harrington. Yes, would any other members online like to provide public comment on this ordinance 889 for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. I don't see any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will close tonight's public hearing. Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to February 7th, 2023?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Thrice?
Yes.
Commissioner Fai?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our third public hearing for the evening, ordinance number 890. Do we have a motion to read title 890 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr?
A engrossed ordinance number 890, an ordinance amending the Community Development Code to implement the requirements of the 2021 Oregon Senate Bill 458 relating to middle housing land divisions and making minor amendments related generally to middle housing.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good evening to you and the board. This is our first hearing on A Engrossed Ordinance Number 890, which provides CDC standards for middle housing land divisions, Community Development Code standards. Next. Oh, and I am Ann Kelly, Senior Planner in Long Range Planning. Thank you. Thank you. So I will provide a quick overview of this presentation. The standards will go into the Community Development Code only if adopted. I'll provide a quick ordinance overview and then talk about the considerations previously and moving forward, and staff's recommendation. Next slide, please. Thank you. The ordinance provides standards that address applications, staff's review, notices, and appeals. We also supplement certain middle housing and middle housing land division standards we previously adopted in June and clarify some of those as well. We are making some changes to the filed ordinance number 890 under the proposed ordinance that were recommended by developers and the planning commission as well as staff, and those affect certain side yards and rights-of-way requirements for those to facilitate application and review. And your materials do include those changes. Previously, you heard ordinance number 890 on December 6th of 2022, and you directed us to engross the ordinance and make those changes that were recommended by the planning commission and developers and staff as well. And you recommended that we, you continued the ordinance, I'm sorry, to January 24th this evening and February 7th. This is the first of the two required hearings for the engrossed ordinance, and the second will be February 7th. And on that date, you can issue a decision on this engrossed ordinance. Thank you. So our recommendation is that you conduct the first public hearing for A Engrossed Ordinance Number 890 and continue the hearing to February 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I know we spent a whole bunch of time on December 6th going over all the different details. Thank you. And I also want to thank the planning commission for their work to get us to this point with this ordinance, built on all the work that they did for the middle housing ordinances that were adopted back in June. So it's time for our first public hearing. So with that, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We have no one coming up in the auditorium to testify on this, so would any members viewing the meeting by Zoom like to provide public comment on this public hearing, ordinance 890, for up to two minutes? I'll give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Well, and with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I tell you, I look forward to the day when the development applications can be swiftly processed for middle housing, and we could see them being built all throughout our community and increase the availability of home purchasing. So with that, do we have a motion to, I want to do this right, continue the public hearing to February 7th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Clerk Moss, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Willie?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Thrice?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Onward ho we go. So we're moving on now to the action section of our agenda, and we have just one item here. We have a resolution and order to reappoint, where's Caroline? Caroline Roper, there it is, as a member of the Housing Authority of Washington County Board of Directors. Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Roper for another term, a four-year term, I believe it is, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Ms. Roper is a great contributor.
I was just going to say thank you for your service, Caroline.
Absolutely. I was going to offer that. Thank you for willingness to stick with us for another four.
Yes, indeed. All righty, that brings us to our second public comment period of the evening. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up who would like to address us or in the room with us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had no one in the room sign up with us. I don't see anyone else coming forward at this moment, so anyone watching us online via Zoom, would you like to provide public comment on any county-related business for up to five minutes? I will give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next on our agenda is board announcements. So as usual, I will do the required thing of announcing our future meetings. Holy smokes, it's going to be February soon. We do not have board meetings next Tuesday, but we pick right up on Thursday with our roundtable starting at nine. That's Thursday, keeps saying, keeps entering here as Tuesday, but it is indeed Thursday, February 2nd. Then the following Tuesday, February 7th, we already know, we've got some ordinances coming back to us again. Tuesday, February 7th, work session starts at nine, formal business meeting, board meeting at 10:00, then we'll reconvene our work session. The week of February 13th, 14th, Valentine's Day, February 14th, you do not want to show up here at the Public Services Building for a board meeting. up here at the Public Services Building for board meetings because we're not having them that week. A few of us are going to be in Washington, DC, working for you through the National Association of Counties, as well as meeting with our congressional delegation. We'll pick right back up the Tuesday after President's Day Monday. On February 21st, work session starts at nine, board meeting at 10:00, then we'll reconvene our work session after that. Then the last Tuesday of the month of February, the 28th, is it leap year this year? No, it's not. It's an odd year.
It's an odd year.
Tuesday, February 28th, we'll have a work session starting at 2:00 in the afternoon and a board meeting in the evening, just like tonight, 6:30. And let's not forget, we have a bonus, a Board of Commissioners Town Hall on Thursday, February 23rd, I believe, starting at 6:00 PM. That will be a hybrid meeting, just like this meeting. You can join us here in the Public Services Building Auditorium, or join us on all of our different hybrid meeting platforms. That's all I have for tonight. Anything else, Commissioners? We need to call the meeting to adjournment because I'm getting a little punchy.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please raise your hand. Thank you, everyone. The motion passes five to zero. Our meeting of February, no, January 24th, 2023 is hereby adjourned. Good night.